I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of council in council chambers, May 7th, 2019. A notice, council will hold a departmental meeting of finance on May 13th, 2019, at 9:30 a.m. And a moment of silence, please.
I have a motion that's moved by councillor Dennis Perrier, seconded by councillor Rick Owen. The council approves the agenda for its regular meeting of May 7th, 2019, as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous? Declaration of pecuniary interest? None seen. Petitions and delegation? I'd ask Tracy Barbe from Kirkland Lake Animal Control to come up.
Thank you for having me. I volunteered to come today just to let you know what was happening down at Kirkland Lake Animal Control. We have new councillors. So if there's any questions at any time, I'm open to that. So on April 1st, Kirkland Lake Animal Control celebrated its 4th anniversary, holding the So, some of you may or may not know, my job is to, my job as Kirkland Lake Animal Control operator is to impound strays found on public property. I act as enforcement by law for 0653 offenses. We issue warnings and tickets. We loan out live traps. We patrol around town, picking up strays. If an animal is surrendered to the impound and not claimed, the animal becomes a financial responsibility and burden of myself, the contract holder. And the only other option is having the animal euthanized. That's what I started as. So, the beginning of the 4th, the beginning of the contract, it was a little bit overwhelming because of the huge number of animals, cats and dogs abandoned in the streets of Kirkland Lake. The numbers were growing because the dogs and the cats were not fixed. I would drive through neighborhoods and see cats at large everywhere in the evenings. As I answered the calls in the first few months of the pound, I quickly started, the pound quickly started filling up. I didn't have a lot of resources and not a lot of options. Our local rescue group, the Advocates for Northern Animals, took what animals they could afford to rescue. Rescue is a very expensive business. Historically, animals at the pound, any pound, are destroyed if you have no options. Anyway, I'm a little nervous. So, we've encountered homes in, with desperate citizens, they had multiple cats and dogs they couldn't care for. Landlords and housing corporations with animals left in apartments. In one instance, we had a litter of puppies that were randomly dumped within different locations around town. Homes with 30 or more cats, homes with 18 dogs and counting. Destroying the multitude of strays and surrenders wasn't an option for Kirkland Lake Animal So, the only other option is euthanizing. So, that wasn't an option for me. I didn't feel comfortable doing that. But, you know, it's expensive. So, we've reached out, we started reaching out to rescues. My own rescue in, for instance, the Advocates for Northern Animals. So, it's still, the Advocates is a very, very small rescue, and they aren't big enough to handle the number of animals that Kirkland Lake had that were, that were strays. So I started calling numerous rescues within Ontario, and Judy Gannon, Associate Director of the Ontario OSPCA, reached out to me. They were starting to understand the plight of the North, not just our community, it was a northern thing. She understood that we had limited resources, and which means we're not a host community to an OSPCA or a Humane Society with an actual physical shelter. So, things started getting into motion. The first year, we transported close to 100 dogs and 200 cats south. The OSPCA, Humane Society, and several other rescues have gone out of their way to help our community to save the animals. The entire dynamics of the rescue in the North has changed. Transport has been continuous in our area for three years. So, just to get, it is still ongoing. In February, we transported 37 animals from Kirkland Lake to other communities. So how does it all work? So what we've done is we've created a huge shared network. So, when a rescue has kennels or cages available, they'll reach out to the network of rescuers, letting them know we have room. If Kirkland Lake Animal Control has an overabundance of animals, we move them. So, I'm, I don't know if you've been to Animal Control, we have 16 cat kennels and we have nine dog kennels. And for one person, it's, it's a lot of animals for one person to care for. So, as soon as, you know, if I, I get more than six cats now, I start reaching out to the other rescues, you know, a few extra dogs. If I get a lot of calls for surrenders, some families are in trouble. People pass away, they have animals, the family doesn't want them. There's, there's a lot of instances where Animal Control comes into, into play. So we move them. The idea is to get everyone adopted quickly so they aren't sitting in months, for months in cages. So, if we don't move them, we either euthanize them, or they sit and sit and sit for months in tiny cages, and that's not humane. But animals are not destroyed here, or in any of the southern rescues that they're sent to. If our pound is empty, I will put the word out for people who wish to surrender. I don't know if some of you follow anything on social media, the Animal Control Facebook page will say, you know what, we have room, we're sending animals south, they're looking for dogs, they're looking for cats, they'll get in touch with me. Sometimes the animals don't even actually end up at the pound, so I'll arrange transport that we all meet at the pound, and then they're, they're sent off to different locations. So, we can't always accept surrenders, but believe it's one solution in reducing the huge number of strays in Kirkland Lake. People need options. We're very successful in animal control efforts to reduce the animal population in the area. Like, we're talking hundreds, you know? I started transporting and I, in the beginning, I never really kept track of all the animals that I actually trans, like, it was just, it was so exciting that, and a lot of the animals didn't actually come into the pound. So if the animal comes into the pound, it's recorded, but if it was a surrender from a household in town and it, and never passed the doors of the pound, sometimes I didn't record it. But, I know in our first year, it was well over 200 cats and well over 100 dogs, like, there was, there was a lot of animals and a lot of households that were over their five animal limit, and they were starting to struggle. It's, it's very expensive to look after an animal. That's just to give you an idea of, of what's been going on in the last four years and how we've been trying to, so, Animal Control, I think, is about controlling the population and not just picking up strays off the street, because you can, you, you have to be proactive and not reactive about what you're doing. So you, you have to reach out to your community and talk to them and offer them assistance because, otherwise, they're going to move out of their apartment, they're going to leave their pets behind, or they're going to leave them on the street. People get desperate and they do desperate things. Also, the, on a side note, Animal Control is also, we've started, four years ago, we've actually started, we introduced a little program with Community Living. Community Living students, or the clients come into the Animal Control Office twice a week to visit the animals. They, they provide a lot of therapy for people, and so their clients will come into the, into the office to visit the cat, the friendly cats and dogs, not all of them. And we've also had several co-op students in the, in the last couple of, couple of years. We have volunteers from within the community. I'm certainly not an island and I can't do it alone. A lot of people volunteer and they help with transports and, but all the extras, transports, so if the, the rescue isn't willing to come to Kirkland Lake, we have to sort out a way to get the animals to them. So, people go on vacations, and I usually say, oh, you're go, I, I have a couple of cats that need to go to that area, or, but, but the way it works out now, they reach out to, to us now. They'll call our office and say, you know, I have a few extra spots, I can take some young cats, I can take dogs, puppies, whatever you have. And, so life has been easier for me though, the last couple of years. It's still not easy to move that many animals, 37 animals. So February, I don't know if you've read, the North Bay Humane Society moved 170 animals south. Well, 37 of those animals were from Kirkland Lake, and that's dogs and cats included. That's just to give you, so, we reach, if I get a call, I'll call the next rescue and we all coordinate. So if Kappa Scasing is driving to Naliskard, I'll meet them in Canogamy, and they'll pick up some of the animals in Canogamy and drive them to Naliskard, and then the other rescue from Naliskard drives them to wherever they have to be. And then, lots of times, North Bay is the middle of the hub, so the animals will stay overnight in North Bay until they're, they're sent around. They could, I've had animals go to Guelph, Guelph, Kingston, Brockville, Quinte, Muskoka. Northern College has been a great help. They take, they usually take up to 10 cats and 15 dogs a year, and usually by the end of the summer, I have 15 dogs that, that, that need a place to go and the college appreciates it. They, so they spay and neuter the animals and adopt them out from there. So, the next couple of years, I have two years left from my contract, and originally, I always thought, if you couldn't afford a pet, you shouldn't have a pet. But I, I think we're all starting to realize that dogs and cats are very good for people's mental health, support animals, or, so I've been working on a program that helps, that will help low-income spay and neuter their animals so they can, in fact, keep an animal with them in an apartment, or like a cat, something suitable, and they will be vaccinated. I'm not sure how many people will be able to help yet. We just started fundraising, and we're also working on, I've been talking with the Sudbury OSPCA and the Muskoka OSPCA, hopefully we can organize a large spay-neuter clinic. What they would do, they would come into the community and they would spay-neuter for low-income, a multitude of animals, all at the same time. And again, it reduces the pet population. Dogs and cats that are, that are fixed don't tend to stray as much as animals that aren't. I can, I would say 90% of all the animals that end up at Animal Control are not fixed. They, they are not altered. And so I think it would be an important step. Anyway, does anyone have any questions, or?
No.
No, no, absolutely not. And I don't even, I don't feed the birds at my house anymore because I don't want them to show up.
Councillor?
Yeah, Tracy, I just want to commend you for finding ways to control the animal population in Kirkland Lake without having to put the, the strays down. To me, that's, that's an admirable thing, admirable thing that you're doing, and there's no cost benefit, there's an expense for you, so it's not a business move in any sense of the word. Also, I very rarely, when I was working, since you've had the contract, I very rarely saw strays in the streets. And now that I'm a councillor, I make a point of, of driving around and checking out certain things on a regular basis. And again, I'm very pleased to report that it's not very often I see stray dogs running loose. So again, I certainly appreciate the job you're doing, especially saving animals instead of putting them down. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Adams?
Yep, pretty much echo councillor's opinion as well. It's just, it's great to see how much animals you're not having to exterminate because of that. They work at hand-in-hand. As the keeper went a letter to us, it's kind of similar to what the Humane Societies are doing. Like, you work hand-in-hand to just have another life for these animals instead of just putting them down. So, I applaud you with what you're able to do, and all the animals you're able to move. That's impressive.
Thank you. I, I think we have to remember that modern pounds or animal control offices, they're not, they're not functioning the way they used to, or, or it's not, it's not socially acceptable anymore. Unfortunately, in really small communities like ours, we, we don't have the privilege of having an OSPCA office or a Humane Society. I had used an office like Timmins as an example before, the Timmins Humane Society. What happens is the Animal Control Officer actually works out of the Timmins Humane Society, and so those animals always have options, like, they've always, so I think if we, you know, if we all work, if we work together with the rescues, it, it never has to be to the point where animals need to be euthanized. We just have to keep a liaison, whether it's myself or another contract holder. They, they need to keep liaisons with the, the rescues, and not just our community. There's, there's so many resources out there now, and we're network, we're on the internet. So, it's, you know, we, we all, we have accesses to each other's, to each other. I was, I was lucky enough, I was just invited to a Northern Dog Conference in Thunder Bay, and the OSPC and the Humane Society, they're focusing their efforts on saving the animals and not enforcing the laws anymore. And the Northern Dog Initiative is one of their priorities right now. They're flying into remote communities, and they're, they're, they're offering resources. And that's, that's, that's a huge, like, that's where all the problems come, is the lack of resources for the citizens, right? So, and they're working as a team, so it's all of, all of our, our little rescues that are helping and kicking in help for, for, they can't do it alone either. As big as they are, they still can't do it all alone. So, yeah, it was the Northern, you should look it up, the Northern Dog Initiative, and, but they're starting to recognize that we are, Kirkland Lake is somewhat of a remote community, and, so they understand that, that it's important to help not just the southern communities, but especially the, some of the reserves that are only fly-in, and, so they, they don't have any access to immunizations or, for the animal, and it's the law now, it's the law to have your animal immunized, so rabies vaccines, so.
Councillor Ivanoff?
I love your story, Tracy. It's, it's really good, and I'm glad that the press is here to hear it, and I'm glad that people in the audience are here to hear it. And I think that, you know, I think you'll have a lot easier fundraising if, if more people get to hear your, your actual story about how you're taking care of animals as opposed to euthanizing them, and it's, I think you're, you know, you have to be commended for doing what you're doing, but I think your story has to be out there and people have to understand exactly what you're doing and why you're doing it. And it's not, you know, obviously you love animals or you wouldn't be doing this, because I don't think there's enough money in the world to do what you do. Anyway, thank you.
But, again, anyone is, anyone from the public, or, they're, they're welcome to come over to the Animal Control Office. I'm there from night, I can be there anytime. I, I answer my phone till 10 o'clock at night, but if they want to come over for a visit, if they want to take a little tour and find out what's going on, they're more than welcome. The doors, the office is open from 9:01 daily. I can make special appointments for people if they want to come in after hours. But, we're there if any questions they have, or nothing to do with pigeons. Nothing to do with pigeons. But, yeah. Thank you.
I'd also like to, maybe, I have one question, do you have any other animals I would like to talk to you about?
Yes. So, I, I had, so things are left in apartments quite often, things, animals, so some animals I don't really know what to do with. I, I got a call one night from the chiropractor's office that a turtle had walked in the office. And I said, yeah, all right. No, she says, honestly, there's a turtle, and sure enough, there was like a half-foot Redear Slider turtle that had wandered into the office, so.
So you could take your time.
Yeah, so I did actually go, I actually put the turtle in my dog's swimming pool at home. I, I didn't really know a lot about turtles. I've, I, so, on occasion, I've helped the victims' advocate group, and so I've had, I've been gifted with lizards, geckos, turtles, rabbits. No, I get calls. No snakes yet. No, yeah, no. What have we had? We've had iguanas, we've had, we're, two, actually two giant turtles, some bunnies left in apartments, so a multitude of animals. But you know, there's always, there's always a rescue out there that specializes in, in certain breeds of dogs, amphibians, birds. I've had, I had a parrot left in an apartment one time, so I've had parrots, I've had budgies, cockatoos, someone found cockatoos. Anyway, I'm gaining experience, so, but I ended up keeping that turtle for a year in my dog's pool, and, but I finally found him. Redear Sliders are very hard to re-home, harder than you can imagine, but anyway, he ended up with a good home.
Any further questions from council? Councillor Rick?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't think of this when I was speaking earlier, but you mentioned pets and mental health care, or maintaining mental health. And I can speak personally to that subject. It's no secret that I've had my struggles with depression over the years. And I happen to be a dog person, although cats are okay too, but, you know. And I know, when I was not well, the dog offered me two things. My pet dog was not judgmental, and my pet dog would never tell anybody anything I told it. And that, that may sound funny to people sitting in the audience that are well, but when you're in the depths and the throes of depression, and you're struggling to keep going, that pet dog, or pet cat, or pet canary, whatever, can make all the difference in the world. I also know another person, someone who's close to me, and she struggles with anxiety, to the point where she cannot function in a day-to-day life. And one of her ways of getting through the anxiety was that she had a, a pet dog, and she kept that pet dog close to her. So, hopefully, I, I'd really like to see, and, and it wouldn't be up to you, I would really like to see the CMHA take advantage of the situation, because I think there could be further partnerships that would help their clients.
Absolutely.
And in terms of people with mental illness, having pets, yes, there are some people that are too sick, would be too sick to look after pets, but would still benefit from interaction. But there's a lot of people like myself, when they were ill, you know, that got them out of bed, it got them up to look after their pet, which is the first step to recovery. So thanks.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I, I started getting a lot of calls, people, they couldn't care for their animals anymore, they had a cat, and it wasn't fixed, so it sprays. And I'd always ask them, I said, well, if your cat was fixed and wasn't spraying, would you, would you like to keep that cat? Absolutely. But they, they couldn't afford, they couldn't afford the vet care, the initial vet care. And so, I know the Advocates for Northern Animals, we had started a little community spay-neuter, so we send 16 cats to North Bay on a monthly basis, that's 16 cats, 12 months out of the year, to the North Bay Humane Society to have, to get them fixed. They have a spay-neuter clinic, and if we have one or two spots left after the, the rescues, on occasion, we would open it up to community cats for people on low-income, and we would help them. We would, so we acted solely as a transport of those animals. So, I have a little, I have a little fundraising event coming up, and I'm hoping to have six cats from the community. It's going to be on an application basis, but what'll happen is, I'll personally transport those animals, and the fundraising will cover the majority of the cost to have those animals fixed. Anyway, there'll be, there'll be highlights, I'll put highlights on the Facebook page and, and how we plan on raising money, and, but I've got six spots booked in the end of July, so there'll be six cats from the community, from low-income families, or senior citizens, or individuals, and we're going to try to, it's a little bit, Rome wasn't built in a day, and I just, you know, every, every day is different, and we just, you know, small steps, right? Small steps to help the community, and, anyway, we're going to have some future, and hopefully the Humane Society, they've been really trying to organize something for the Kirkland Lake area, and they recognize the needs, so, so any low-income families will be able to have their animals spayed or neutered. There's no promises yet, but that's, that's what we're working on for the future, anyway.
Tracy, I certainly thank you for coming down to speak with us today, and the general public as well. You acknowledged in your letter that some people in the community may question your affiliation with Advocates for Northern Animals. How do you keep those two roles separate?
Well, so Advocates for Northern Animals is our local rescue. I'm, I'm the president of the Advocates for Northern Animals, so obviously, you're going to try to work with your local rescues first, and then anything else above and beyond what they can't do. There's, there's, there was just way too many animals for one little rescue to look after. I think probably 150 animals for a rescue our size is what they can handle, and anything above and beyond that, we, we have to, the Animal Control has to outreach to, to other communities and other larger rescues. So, I'm not really sure what was in question, but, so, if you're going to operate as a modern pound, you need help from rescues. And of course, you're going to, you know, you're going to look after yourself first, right? So, the Advocates for Northern Animals raises money, and it's predominantly from Kirkland Lake. So they're going to help Kirkland Lake first. So if that's where the, the fundraising is coming from, that's the community, that's our hope. Advocates, Kirkland Lake is Advocates' host community. So we're Kirkland Lakers, and we're going to look after Kirkland Lake animals. So, a modern pound can't function without rescues. So the first rescue is Advocates for Northern Animals. They're, they're our host rescue, so they're the first in the front lines to help. Did I answer that? Yeah, okay.
Well, thank you very much. Any more questions from council members? Excellent. Thank you very much, and if you want to come back and update us again, we would appreciate it.
Now that I'm not so nervous.
There we go.
I've gotten over the, it's been years, I think it's been college since I had to do any sort of presentation, so, thank you for having me.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to call up Steve Cox on behalf of the Hockey Heritage North Foundation, installation of brass plates at Heritage North.
I'm here today with the other members of the Hockey Heritage North Foundation, Ted Irvin, Lorraine Rabaza, Jerry Rabaza, and Heather Taylor Sandrin. The Hockey Heritage North Foundation was formed when the town of Kirkland Lake took over the operation of the Hockey Heritage North. took over the operation of the Hockey Heritage North building. Over the years, uh, we've been involved in projects that included assisting with displays, running the Festival of Trees, which had then allowed us to assist community groups, uh, like the LaSalle Theater, Community Living, Arts Council, the Legion Branch, Minor Hockey, the Legion Eighteen Sevens, and the Kirkland Lake Gold Miners. At the same time, we have acquired many impressive artifacts, uh, for the Hockey Heritage North display, including the nineteen forty Lakeshore Blue Devil, uh, jersey. We strongly believe that there is still room for a Northern Ontario hockey history component, um, that would tie the former Hockey Heritage North mandate to the current Heritage North Conference and Exhibition Centre. There are a few Hockey Heritage North components left in the building, including, uh, the players' photos, uh, on the upper wall in the main entrance, an outdoor activity scene, skate sharping booth, and a number of fixed display cases along the north wall. These cases can still contain a number of artifacts related to players, uh, and, and towns in, in north, in the north. The foundation would like to continue to work with town council to preserve the hockey component as we have made some alterations to the heritage, uh, the honored members' plaques that used to be displayed in our gold hall. And we would like to install them on professionally constructed rails along the walls and the theater area. We would, of course, complete this at no cost to the town, but in order for the foundation to invest in such a project, we need to know council's plans for the hockey displays and components that currently exist in the building. In the two artifacts rooms, there are many artifacts that can still be displayed as well. In June, we will be working, uh, with Kelly Gallagher to develop, uh, Holy Name Irish Display for the reunion that's planned on June the twenty-seventh. In closing, many of us have been involved since the nineties, when this project, uh, had just got underway. But we are still very passionate about the history of the game and how it relates to Kirkland Lake's history. And would like to know if you, the council, would like to work with us to continue this.
Councilors, any questions? Rick?
Um, it's not so much a, a question as a comment, but, um, I think previous councils decided in their wisdom that Hockey Heritage North, um, while maintaining a museum component, would not primarily be a museum, it would be primarily a conference, uh, and rental, uh, type facility. Um, I believe this decision was made, was based on economics. The fact that unfortunately, as much as everyone wanted, uh, people to come to Hockey Heritage North for whatever reason, um, that didn't translate into numbers through the doors. And with the town taking over the operation and the tight budgets that, uh, councils of the day, uh, had, a decision was made to turn it into a conference, uh, and rental facility. So in terms of future plans, personally, uh, as a counselor, I, uh, have no plans to go back to, to making into a full-fledged museum again. I think in terms of adding to the local economy, while the facility still loses money, and until we have a population of around forty thousand dollars, would probably not be able to break even. It does, uh, allow local businesses to, uh, hold meetings and conferences uh, with their, their staff and employees locally. Um, it's also something that we have, that we can sell to other companies that are, are coming to town or potentially expanding their operations. Uh, for example, if Agnagle Eagle decides to go ahead with a mine, uh, just outside of Kirkland Lake, um, having it as a hockey museum would mean nothing to them. But having it as a place where they could have health and safety meetings, um, engineering meetings, uh, Christmas parties, uh, would, would be a benefit to the town as a whole. So I, I'm not against putting the plaques up. But the input that, that I've, that I've been able to get, um, I think the location of where your group wants to put them and the practicality of what we're doing with the, uh, building now, um, doesn't necessarily, isn't necessarily a good fit. But there certainly is room, uh, within the building for those plaques to be, uh, put up, and I have, I think that would be a, a good tribute to the initial, uh, reason for building the building and a tribute to the, to the history. It's just a matter of, I think, your committee and council coming, and sta, and town staff coming to an agreement as to where the most appropriate place to put them would be.
May I speak for a second? Yeah. We have no intentions of converting it back to what it was. We totally understand the decisions that were made to move forward and, and make it a more economically viable building. Um, but there is a hockey component in it, and we would just like to know if, if we could help the town, you know, change the displays and, and improve that because there are some users of the building that, uh, choose to leave the hockey components uncovered when they have a rental, or there, that's an option for them, uh, reunions and, and other things too. But, um, to, to, to go back, uh, to what it was is, we have no intention of that. We just wanna move forward and, and keep that hockey history in Kirkland Lake and, in the north alive to some degree in the building.
Councilor Avon?
Steve, I'm not opposed to, uh, uh, doing the plaques in the building. I'd just like to see where you're putting them. I, I can't visualize what you exactly mean, and I, so if you, if you get a chance to maybe have a little meet and greet or something down there, just to show us where you wanna put the, the plaques and how they're gonna be displayed, I would certainly be interested in seeing that.
For sure. Maybe we can arrange that, and maybe that may not be the best location.
I don't know either, but I mean, it just, you know, and it might be the best location. I don't wanna say it's not.
Okay.
Okay.
Any further comments or questions? And just to let you know, we don't have to make a decision today. We can actually direct staff for further investigation. Um, it would give, uh, council and staff more time to possibly do a site, um, inspection as well as have staff come back with a feasibility, um, of the issue as well as what happened, so we can defer it for today.
Okay, for sure.
If, if that's council's direction, not mine.
Okay, for sure. Thank you very much.
So Joanne's just working on a resolution.
Okay, so I have a resolution that is moved by Councilor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Councilor Rick Owen. The council directs the, uh, the staff to explore and report back to council on the feasibility and impact of further increasing exhibition space at Heritage North.
All in favor? Unanimous? We'll move on to acceptance of minutes and recommendations.
Our resolution is moved by Councilor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Councilor Rick Owen. The council accepts the minutes of the following meetings. The minutes of the regular meeting of council held April sixteenth, twenty nineteen, and the minutes of the Department Finance meeting held May second, twenty nineteen.
All in favor? Unanimous? And, uh, reports from municipal officers and communications, acting CAO, repeal policy, uh, budget distribution, distribution of surplus.
I'm glad you tried to say it.
Yeah, it's hard to say up here.
I, I think I can summarize the, uh, point A and point B, and then have a combined discussion. The, uh, policy repeal, it, basically, it's a housecleaning item. The, uh, council does pass a resolution at the end of each year at, uh, distributing the funds. The twenty eighteen resolution is attached for councilor's references. Um, the policy reviews for accountability and transparency. Again, it's a policy that is repealing a policy from two thousand and seven. The document identifies the policy's practice and standards, giving the town, uh, or guiding the town, uh, in its practices. The flying flags, that's another one, the flying, at half-mast, uh, that is just a policy to determine what the rules are for when that is engaged and, uh, what the process is to be followed. The health and safety policy was brought forward at the April sixteenth, uh, meeting, and it was revised to include Councilor Adams' references to section twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight of the Ontario Occupational Health Standards Act, uh, Health and Safety Act. Um, in general, all the policies are very much a housecleaning and making things a little bit easier for the public, uh, to understand how, how things work. I think I just thought about it.
Any input or feedback from council members?
I have a resolution that's moved by Councilor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Councilor Rick Owen. The council approved the repeal of the policy budget distribution of surplus as recommended by the acting chief administrative officer.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Councilor Dennis Perrier, seconded by Councilor Rick Owen. The council adopt the policy accountability and transparency, repealing the policy dated December eighteenth, twenty, uh, two thousand and seven as presented by the acting chief administrative officer.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Councilor Rick Owen, seconded by Councilor Dennis Perrier. The council adopt the policy flying flags at half-mast as presented by the acting chief administrative officer.
All in favor? Unanimous?
It's moved by Councilor Rick Owen, seconded by Councilor Dennis Perrier. The council adopt the policy health and safety as presented by the acting chief administrative officer.
All in favor? Unanimous? At this time, we're gonna have a report for the wastewater treatment plant clarifier. Acting CAO?
I'm, I'm well-trained, I wait for that. Uh, on April sixteenth, the, uh, manager of, uh, development did bring forward a report identifying that the clarifier had had problems and that, uh, repairs were required to, to, to roughly fifty thousand dollars, and asked for, uh, permission to proceed as that dollar, those dollars were allocated under the twenty nineteen capital budget. Uh, council rightfully raised concerns, uh, are we following process? Is this the best way to go about it? How did this happen? And asked for an updated report. Uh, the attached document is that report. Um, as per the, I, I'm just going to go through because I noticed that it, uh, it didn't come up, yeah. Okay. Uh, the recommendations from staff are that council does approve the costs associated repairing the north clarifier prior to the approval of the twenty nineteen budget as represented in the April sixteenth, uh, or, uh, April sixteenth report. As per that report, the cost would be roughly fifty thousand dollars. Questions from council were, how did the, uh, clarifier become an emergency capital issue? Uh, did the project as it evolved contradict the town's procurement practices? If a competitive process at this point, uh, were implemented, would that be prudent? And if the process as it evolved placed the town at a financial disadvantage? I have to clarify, that's my understanding of the questions that council was asking at the table. If I'm wrong, the interpretation is mine. Evolution to a capital project, effectively, it was not identified as a capital project. It was identified as something went wrong, looked like it was a pretty easy fix. It incrementally evolved, becoming a much more serious project. Only arrived at that point when it was identified by the manufacturer as to what, what had gone wrong. So it did not go out and, uh, it, it did not, uh, start as a, the mess that we have today. It's, it was incremental. As they fixed one thing, they found something else until they got to the heart of the problem. But they would not have got to the heart of the problem had the, uh, gearbox and the housing not been taken apart, and then with the manufacturer's assistance, see what had happened. And that was the Sheard pin that was referenced in the April sixteenth. So, uh, again, that, that's how it got to that point. Did the project as it evolved contradict the town's procurement practices? No, the agreement that we had with, uh, Aqua for the operating is, when you see a problem, fix it. Because this does affect both, uh, town's property as well as the services to the municipality. The, uh, Aqua did, as I said earlier, identify problems and was fixing them, all of them being relatively minor, but nothing worked until, as I said, they got the manufacturer involved and the issue itself was identified. Throughout the process, they did continue to advise municipal staff as to what was going on. And as per the contract, we knew it and agreed, yes, that's your next step, go ahead and do that. Because again, it was maintenance, routine maintenance repair. The, uh, procurement policy itself does have a, um, a section in it that deals with, uh, when you can go and when you, or when you do not have to go through a competitive process. Now, I want to point out that we didn't know that we, what the issue was. But in this, uh, clause, in the event of an emergency, an emergency is defined as an imminent or actual danger of injury or destruction of real or personal property belonging to the town or unexpected interruption of an essential public service. This situation met both. Had they come forward and said, hey, say at the very beginning, this is what's happening and you got the spring runoff, what do you wanna do? I, 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 I think I would agree with the director to say, get it fixed, and let's let council know there's a triggering event. It's not doing an end run around the procurement policy, it's working, it's using the procurement policy to deal with the problem. So did it contr, contradict? No. Is it prudent to embark on a competitive process at this point to resolve the issue? You could. The clarifier, if I understand correctly, Eric, is lying there disassembled. Manufacturer is, has been working with Aqua. If you wish, we could go to a tender now and ask somebody else to come in. However, you do have a disassembled job there. Finding somebody who wants to step in and take that, uh, responsibility, I think would be difficult, but we could try that. Would it work to your benefit? I think it would be risky. You do have operations in place at the plant. To bring in a third party would be disruptive. Would it save money? I don't think so. You're going through a tender process. When we, and, and the thing is sitting there. What you're spending the money on at this point is the crane. That's a third part- That's a third-party service. That goes out to tender. We, Aqua, on our behalf, will go through their procurement process to try to find a crane to come in, lift the thing up so that with the manufacturer's assistance, they can put it back together. I keep referring to the manufacturer, but I think it's an important element in this discussion because when the things went wrong, they contacted manufacturer and said, we don't know why. And the clarifier was off warranty, right? The warranty had ended. Manufacturer identified what the problem was, sheared pin. Whose fault is that? That's where you get the legal beagles involved. It could have been manufacturer, it could have been the installer. I think it's Maple Reindeer. It could have been Loctite. Maybe there was Loctite on it and fell through. It can't be established. So you can fight about that legally. I think the manufacturer did a, came forward very well. They offered and sent up technical assistance at their cost. They have offered all parts and services at cost. So, and they are guiding the reinstallation process and making sure what is done is done correctly. And if it meets their satisfaction, they are offering a one-year warranty on the clarifier to go forward. Would that still be on offer if you bring in another contractor? I don't know. Aqua was able to make that argument because they are the operator of the firm, of the plant. They have taken it apart and know what they're talking about. And they were the project manager on the installation and the construction of the original plant. I think that gave them some additional leverage. That's something we would have to explore. Would the manufacturer's position still be the same if we get another company in? Has the process, as it evolved, placed the town at a financial disadvantage? I, again, Aqua began by treating this as a routine maintenance issue. Number of costs were incurred in getting to this point, but they were incurred under the service contract, not additional to it. There are some examples that I gave. One is, they had to use a, get a diesel waste pump to remove the sludge from the bottom of the clarifier. That was done because Aqua Emergency Services has that generator and that pump here. That was brought in, used, and no cost to the town. So I think that, you know, you balance it, you look at it and you say, well, if, if we had known what the problem was, could we have known? And we had gone out, would we have saved more money or spent more money? Can't tell. But right now, I think you've actually got a pretty good deal here. And your clarifier is sitting on the floor, disassembled. When we had the major, the rain in, at the end of Easter, we had 600 liters a second going through wastewater treatment plant. As I say in the report, the plant can continue to run on the one clarifier. It's not a really good idea. So I have to bring that back, and I know I'm not saying anything that people necessarily wish to hear. But what is for, in the best interest of the municipality? Get it done and end it, finish this project. Are we following the best process as we work through on water, wastewater treatment? I think we try to. I think these instances will happen, and they throw every monkey wrench into the works. But generally, we do have an open communication with Aqua. They advise us as to what they think they have to do. We bring it to council, council decides what they want to do. Is there ever a doubt as to, with the procurement? If you have a doubt, please do raise it. But we try to follow our procurement process. And when we work through Aqua, their procurement process is as stringent or more so than ours. It's a provincial standard. They can't go out and just hire anybody. I'm not trying to defend or anything else. But we do have a problem that we need to solve. So I'm just trying to be forthright with that. If I have insulted anybody or offended you, I apologize. Eric, do you wish to come up in case there's questions as to what happened in that?
Questions or comments? Councillor Owen?
Yeah. I don't think my questions at the previous council meeting had to do with it, although they may have, about the procurement policy being followed. My concerns were more that we're looking at a $50,000 single-sourced contract and being responsible to the rig payers of this community. I do not believe it is in the rig payer's best interest to accept on face value what the person that's going to get the single-source contract tells us. To me, common sense says when you're spending that much money, that you get more than one price. And those were, that was my, one of my major concerns with this contract. Another thing that hasn't been mentioned at all to date is that that sewage treatment plant was overbuilt by about a third, I believe, Eric?
Overbuilt?
Yes, to capacity. That we did not have, that it was built for additional capacity that we do not have. And that's why we can bring swastika in. Okay? That's never been mentioned. We've been operating since November without that clarifier. So I'm not sure that it's an emergency situation, although it may be under the definitions that we work. I know there's been concerns voiced about spring runoff. And I've been doing a very unscientific monitoring of Murdoch Creek. And I'm pleased to report at no time have I seen it exceed its banks or in fact be close to the top of its banks, although it gets higher where it narrows down. And it seems to be receding at this point. We're fortunate in that we live close to the height of land, unlike central Ontario, so we're not getting a lot of inflow for miles and miles around the spring runoff. And if we've been able to handle spring runoff at this point, to this point in time, I don't see that, that's a non-starter for me. I'm still in favor when we spend this much money. I'm not saying we're breaking the rules. And I'm not saying staff broke the rules. That's, that's not what I meant to imply.
My apologies, that's what I thought.
Yeah, well, I may have, the way I asked the questions, and that was two weeks ago or three weeks ago, it may have come across that way. My major concern is when we spend $50,000, I think it's in the rig payer's best interest not to single-source it.
Eric, can you tell us where the expenditure goes to?
The only outlier, Rick, on this, on this issue is the cost of the crane. Okay? The parts are all, are all at cost. There's, nobody's going to get a better price than that. And the reason we got it at cost is because of our relationship with the manufacturer. The only outlier now is the cost of the crane. So if you get somebody else to procure it, that's fine. What we're doing is we're working with Cementation at KL Gold. They're going through their schedule to see if they can, if they can schedule one of those cranes to come over. That's going to have significant savings to the town. So that's the outlier on that part. Other than that, so that's why, Rick, I can't, I can't come to council and say, well, I think the crane's going to cost $11,000, and then I get a bill for 27 or 30 or whatever the cost may be, right? Because typically, the cost for cranes is the transportation down to the job, and then coming back, Dennis can probably attest to that. As far as spring runoffs, Rick, we had, like I said, we had that day of, you know, almost 700 liters a second coming through the plant. Wasn't designed even for that. We were able to manage it, you know what I mean? We were able to manage that. So, and it's not necessarily with height of land, it's influ- infiltration. When it rains and when it melts, it gets into our pipes and it comes to our plant. We, so yes, we made it through without flooding the town. The effluent quality is not, is not passing our regulations for the month of April.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, and you see, that's, and I'm not saying it's a fixable problem. But as a councillor, I have, I have problems saying, go out and hire a crane at taxpayers' expense when I don't know what that expense is going to be. Like, I mean personally, I have a problem with that. And I, and I appreciate what you're saying, Eric. It depends where the crane comes from and all that. But then, I feel as a councillor, I'm signing a blank check now.
Well, perhaps, no, 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 no. Perhaps you can wait until I say, the exact cost of this crane is going to be X number of dollars. And then you can pull the trigger.
I would feel much more comfortable if I knew the exact cost.
That's, that's fine.
I do appreciate the fact that one thing led to another, I do understand.
And also with that job, what was done on that job too, Rick? Would have been done, so even digging into it, right? So the motor left, had to do it. The gears that were destroyed, had to do it. So nothing extra was done, you know what I mean? We didn't, we didn't change a transmission to find out that it's a differential.
Yeah, no. No, I appreciate that. And I'm not suggesting that that happened.
Right.
I'm not suggesting that anything wrong happened. I just have problems approving something where I don't know what it's going to cost. I have problems of approving something that's going to cost $50,000 without a competitive bid. Okay, we've had our discussion now. I know I have a little more insight. Yes, I'm a little more comfortable going ahead with what was proposed. But I certainly am not comfortable going ahead with what was proposed until I know the costs.
And that's understood. So I can provide you the exact, the exact cost of the crane?
Provide that in open meetings so the public knows exactly what we're paying. That, that's, you know, we want to be transparent here. We want everybody to know council's doing what it was supposed to do. Aqua's doing what it was supposed to do, and here's what it's going to cost.
And I think we can provide that. And certainly, I think you'll have a price on the crane. We can show whatever comes through the manufacturer. Perhaps there's a better lesson to be learned though. Two years ago, roughly a year and a half ago, a council decided that it would put councillors on some of these larger projects. No, I, seriously, it worked out. I mean, everybody was scared of it. But it didn't, it worked out pretty well. Councillor has an independent point of view. They can't make any decisions at that table. But when we're talking with the contractors and we're going through a project, you're advised. It's not a bad learning curve either, because your projects are getting larger, not smaller. Something like the pool that helped reassure council towards the close of that particular council term of how things were going and what the discussions were. And that was fed back into the council table by the councillor. It's a suggestion, right? You do have some of these things going on. Door's open. Just a thought.
Sorry, Councillor Dennis Perrier?
Excuse me, I don't believe that anybody thinks there's any wrongdoing being done here. All we're saying is if it's, if it's a large sum of money, that there's, there is reputable contractors within 100 miles of Kirkland Lake that they'll come up, they'll give their estimate. And whether you like it or not, they'll give it to you. We'll have something to compare to. And that'll maybe please a lot of people, you know? From saying, well, look, we got, we got two, we got three contracts, and this is what we, what we come up with, so.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, sorry Wolf, when you made the comment about putting councillors on certain jobs, I misunderstood what you were saying, because I was about to say that, well, that oversteps the duties of a councillor. But you were talking about not supervising jobs, but being in on the discussion with contractors.
Yes, yes.
And I think that, yes, that that could be a good, good idea.
There's some, yes, I did not mean that you're supervising.
Yeah, no, because on one occasion in the past, a councillor did take on a supervisory role with the swimming pool. And that was over and beyond the jurisdiction of a councillor.
Yeah, no, there's not, not any of that. But when we have the information that comes forward and those discussions, you know, swastika, whatever like that, there's a lot to be learned. And there's certainly a lot that can be contributed as well. Reality is though, and you know, I'm sure I'm getting the look from every bureaucrat in the room right now, there is still a process that has to be followed and results that have to be accomplished. And it would be incumbent upon the other people sitting at the table to make sure that that is clear too, right? I don't know if that makes you guys feel better.
Councillor Adams?
Yep, so certainly how it was first presented, $50,000. But now with the explanation of it is the crane, that's what's costing it. That's certainly a hefty price. And if you're able to negotiate with Cementation to only drive it 10 kilometers compared to a couple hundred, that's, that's huge, so.
And I do apologize again if I misinterpreted, but I'm just working on that assumption.
So I have a resolution that's moved by Councillor Rick Owen, seconded by Councillor Dennis Perrier. The council approved the costs associated with repairing the North Clarifier prior to the approval of the 2019 capital budget as presented in staff report to council on April 6th.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, as that reads, I can't vote in favor of that because I don't know the cost. Subject to, to the cost being defined or something like that. But again, to me, that's signing a blank check when there's no cost involved and you're asking us to approve it.
Councillor Perrier?
This crane price is above the $50,000, eh?
No.
Oh, it's part of the $50,000?
It's within, Dennis, so that's why, when I, when I, when we first brought it up, that's why I couldn't, I didn't know the price of the crane, right? So I, Brian, looking at it, I had to, I couldn't come to you with a low number and then crawl up and say, here's what it costs.
I was only understanding it was above the $50,000.
No, 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 no. So, you know, it's my, it's my hope that it's, that it's far lower. You know, I'm a, I'm a big taxpayer too, right? So I want it, I want it to be low as well.
Okay, so I've changed the wording to say that the final cost for the repair to the clarifier be confirmed and be brought back to council for consideration.
All in favor?
Perfect, good, thank you.
At this time, I'll call Fire Chief Rob Adair for the master plan updates.
So this is just an update on issues that were identified in the master fire plan that we've been working on since then, trying to stay within the existing budget. Like they identify things like training, bylaws, operational guidelines, the washer and the dryer. So it's just an update on what we've been working on. And just to note that there are also issues that were identified in the Essentials seminar that we had here this year. So if anybody has any questions?
Questions, comments? Councillor Adams?
Yep, so certainly the report is a good report. Certainly sheds light on a systemic issue that had been going on, clearly identified in the report for over almost a decade plus. So these recommendations that you brought forward, is this what you want to side it on tonight?
Well, as soon as possible would be nice.
So I'm, I'm kind of confused on like, in lieu of council not doing this, so like, how, how is this supposed to go down? So staff brings it forward, council directs, and then council has to... and then council has to make sure it's implemented, even though staff isn't implementing it? I don't get that one.
I think all of us are a little confused, because what threw everybody for a loop was, council's never adopted the plan. Never given direction, this is what you're supposed to do and how to do it. At the same time, he walks into a mess, and he has to clean it up. So he's doing what he knows has to be done. He didn't need any council direction at that point, because he's dealing with personnel, he's dealing with what he's supposed to be, his day-to-day operations, goes out and gets the advice. A lot of it coincides with what the, the POMAX report says, but at some point, yeah, as staff, you do need to have councils buy-in on it, because at this point, you're talking about dollars. You're, you're right councillor, those recommendations are all the way through saying, "Within the budget." That's what we would like to see accomplished in the 2019 operating and capital budget, so that we can address some of those shortfalls. And those are beyond what we can do on an operating basis. The chief has put into his, uh, operating budget increased training dollars. That's directly from the, um, report, but it's also based on what his immediate needs are as a staffing. So there's going to be, I, I think, a situation of flux where we are doing some stuff, it's, we're looking for guidance on some, and there's going to be other stuff that we're simply just going to have to put our hands up and say, "Council, what do you want to do? Which of all these trucks would you like to repair or replace?" And it's going to be a give and take.
Councillor Adams?
Yep, so I'm certainly, culture and everything starts from the top down, so certainly when there's quotes in the, in the fire master plan, saying that we're operating at the lowest possible cost, and not to be sensational, probably at an unsafe level, I think as councillor, we need to maybe turn that around, right? And that's why, a few items down the agenda is why we should measure, because it's change management. You, you plan, you do, you assess, and then you act, right? So we need to have that as a change management, because this is going to be a major change. Something that was systemic over a decade plus, as identified, is going to take some time to do. So like even for some of the, uh, some of the equipment costs, right? It even states in the report that some of them can be done over a five-year period, but that just needs to happen, right? It just needs that, that support, so it needs to turn around, so.
I definitely echo councillor Adams' feelings of support for fire services. They are definitely needed within our community, and they have been neglected for very long. And this is an essential service that we need to really take care of, starting with training, to get everybody on the same page. And I'm not a hundred percent, because that's not proper, but I definitely support the, the fire services in Kirkland Lake, and I hope to make positive changes in the future.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I certainly would not feel comfortable living in this community if it did not have a professional element to the firefighting. So, you know, as far as I'm concerned, any discussions about going volunteer, and, and I know this is a background issue, are, are non-starters with me. I agree, for many years, I was good friends with Chief Ron Senor, and how many years ago was that? That's got to be twenty years or more.
More than that, yeah.
And at that point in time, he was putting on displays, and he told me, like, scaling down the side of the fire department, auto extrication, and he told me the reason he was doing that was not just public education, but also to show the public that the fire department was needed, because even at that time, he was, there was pressure to get rid of the fire department. And I think that's been reflected by spending over the last at least twenty years. And I don't think the fire departments at, the management of the fire department is at blame for this. I think councils have said, "Oh, well, you know, we can get by, we can make do." And, and I think that's an attitude, a culture that, that we as a new council need to really strongly look at. We're talking major dollars here, so obviously, we can't go out and build a new fire hall, procure the land and build a new fire hall this year, during our, probably during our mandate, but we'd sure like to. We can't spend a million dollars on a new ladder truck at this point, I don't believe, but we can start putting money away for these projects, and I think that's somewhere where the fire department was always short-changed too. It wasn't, they were, the fire chiefs were never allowed to put into their budgets, at least this is my understanding. They were never allowed to put any reserve fund, funding into their budgets, even though they knew it was prudent to do so. So, you know, hopefully, the current council will, will find a way of, of rectifying the situation and, and letting the fire department know that, yes, you are an important service. You are a service that's valued by council and valued by the ratepayers, and, and we are going to provide the best possible service we can, so.
Councillor Ivanoff?
Yeah, I also feel you've been underserved as a, as a fire department in Kirkland Lake over the last number of years, and it's time that we started dedicating some resources and helping you guys do a better job. And I read the report, and I thought, "My God", it's the lowest common denominator. It can't be any worse than any place. I mean, I think Larder Lake probably has a better fire department than, not a better, better facilities and better equipment and better everything than Kirkland Lake has. And here we are with eighty-five or eighty-seven hundred people living in a community with, with lousy equipment, poor training. Not saying you're understaffed, but you know what, you need some, a little boost in your morale. And I, I would hope that this council sees that and were able to fix it up. I'm glad Patrick brought this to the table, because it's, it's a, it's a report that's well worth the read.
It is.
And it's, I mean, it, it's, it's not critical, it's critical of, of the way that you guys have been treated in the last twenty years, not in the last few years, and it needs to be repaired. Anyway, Rob, I, I know it's, it's a tough goal, but we have to do something.
I have a resolution that is moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council has accepted the master fire plan update from the fire chief, and that the recommendations be presented for consideration during the 2019 budget discussions. All in favor? Unanimous?
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, we'll have the clerk.
So first one is, um, May fifth to eleventh is Emergency Preparedness Week, and we have a resolution that we'd like to pass. So it's moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. Whereas council, whereas Kirkland Lake recognizes the importance of emergency management in Ontario, and whereas the goal of Emergency Preparedness Week is to raise community awareness and the need to prepare for the possibility of an emergency, and whereas the safety of, of our community is a responsibility of each and every one of us, and we must prepare now and learn how to secure a strong and healthy tomorrow. Therefore, we, the council of the town of Kirkland Lake, do hereby proclaim the week of May fifth to eleventh, 2019, to be Emergency Preparedness Week in Kirkland Lake, and encourage all citizens, get prepared by building an emergency kit and completing a family plan.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Okay, the next one is the Ontario Public Works Association, and this is their fifty-eighth year that they have been honoring the public works employees, and so they are asking for May nineteenth to twenty-fifth to be declared a week. So I do have a resolution that is moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council proclaimed May nineteenth to twenty-five, 2019, as National Public Works Week in and for the town of Kirkland Lake.
All in favor? Unanimous?
Okay, the next is a request from Friends of St. Peters, I believe, Friends of Interlink and at St. Peters. So they are doing the Interlink Concert Choir on May twenty-third, and what they're asking for is that council please declare that as their intergenerational day. So the Interlink program brings together grades four and five students at the Central Public School and seniors in the community, and they get together and do a couple of concerts throughout the year. So I have a motion that is moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council proclaimed May twenty-third, 2019, as intergenerational day in and for the town of Kirkland Lake in recognition of the Interlink Choir.
All in favor? Unanimous?
And my computer's not keeping up, so the next one is the Hundredth Anniversary Celebrations. The Hundredth Anniversary Committee has applied for liquor licensing for their meet and greets at the college, and in order to do, to get their licensing, they need a resolution from council that declares it as, um, an event of municipal significance. So I have a resolution that is moved by councillor Rick Owens, seconded by councillor Dennis Perrier. The council declares that the Kirkland Lake Hundredth Anniversary Celebrations are a municipally significant event for the town of Kirkland Lake, and the council supports the committee in its liquor license application to the AGCO for the following dates, between twelve-thirty and four-thirty PM at the Northern College Gym on the following dates. Thursday, June twenty-seventh, Friday, June twenty-eighth, Wednesday, July third, Thursday, July fourth, and Friday, July fifth.
All in favor? Unanimous?
And then the last item that I have is our summer meeting schedule. So generally during the month of July and August, council only meets once per month. If there's other meetings that we need, then we call them at that time, but we can regularly schedule one per month. So I have a resolution that's moved by councillor Patrick Adams, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff. The council approves the 2019 summer meeting schedule as follows. Tuesday, July sixteenth, and Tuesday, August thirteenth. If other meetings are necessitated, the clerk will call the meeting with the appropriate notice provided.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, at this time, we'll call on councillor Patrick Adams.
Yep, so similar to previous conversation, my report, I just pretty much took the quotes of, where it pretty much stated that operationally, the department needs to re-event from the ground up, with council administration providing strong support to the fire chief by directing, assisting, and giving him permission to fulfill the town's responsibilities under the Fire Prevention and Protection Act. The report further stated the town has to be seen to offer support to the fire department in the same manner as it would offer to other municipal departments. The town should clearly state the value that the fire department is expected to bring to municipality. So this report, famous quote out there is if, you can't, you can't manage what you don't measure, right? So if we're going to do this, we need to make sure that we, we do manage it, and we do measure it, and we do make sure that we get the recommendations, and like where the steps are that we need to go. In the fire plan itself, on page sixty-seven, it provides pretty much that exact same method of, if you're going to implement something, you need to measure it, you need to get your status report and see how it's going, and you need, you can track it along that way. So pretty much, originally it was proposed as quarterly, but I think biannual, so twice a year, updates of how the master fire plan's going, where we're at, what the, where we're at with completion, and what the next steps are to ensure completion of recommendations. So what was presented by the fire chief, there is still a big list of recommendations out there, policy-wise as well, which was all available on page nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, and forty-eight, where it talks about the property standards. It says we can even utilize our fire department for property standards, and that could almost be seen as a revenue stream to recoup the cost of the hundred and ten thousand dollars of bringing in somebody to consult the fire chief. So there's a lot of good recommendations, and I think we can chug along, because we did pay sixty-five thousand dollars for this report, and we need to get our value back. So if they have recommendations, we should implement them. And perhaps if we get another consultant report, we can measure and track along as well, similar to what we're maybe embark on with this one.
Question, councillor Ivanoff?
No, I agree with councillor Adams. I think it's, it's time that this report was looked at carefully, and those recommendations who were implemented, I know there's some cost to some of them. There's some that are a little less expensive, some that are more expensive. I think we have to prioritize what we want to do and, and how we can implement this report. It's, it certainly is an eye-opener if you go through the report.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I, I certainly am in agreement that we need to implement as, as much of the report as possible, but I think council and the ratepayers must understand that this is a, a long-term project, where we're talking several million dollars to implement the whole project. And I wouldn't want anybody to think, because we're, we're officially saying, "Hey, let's go ahead with this project," that, you know, by next year, we'll have a new, new ladder truck, a new pumper truck, a new fire station. That's not going to happen in, in the very near future, but hopefully it will happen sooner rather than later by adopting this plan.
Anything further? Okay.
I have a resolution that's moved by councillor Patrick Adams, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff. The council directs the chief administrative officer to work with the fire chief to provide biannual updates on the implementation of recommendations from the fire master plan. The updates are to be presented with what the recommendations were, the percentages of completion, and what the next steps are to ensure completion of those recommendations.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, we'll have the manager of planning and land development come up.
All right. I believe this was a request from one of our councillors, was to look at the opportunity of creating a parking lot at the old Woolworths site, so twenty-two, twenty-four Government Road West. The idea was that since we've recently amended the parking bylaw to eliminate parking on one side of the road on Government Road, we'd create a new parking lot on, within that same block, in order to accommodate the same level of parking that was taken away. So we did take a look at expenses related to this property, since that's typically what we do when we're trying to reassess what we want to do with it in the future. It was demolished in 2016 at a cost of about thirty-nine thousand dollars, without considering tipping fees, because those, those were waived. We also, I'm not including the outstanding taxes on here as well, but there would have been some. There has been zero interest in the property since that building's been demolished, so I haven't had anybody come in and looking for a vacant lot downtown, and with the intent to, to build something on that piece of property. So it's, it's sitting idle. Putting a parking lot, lot in would definitely fulfill a need for parking downtown. Costs associated with it are approximately eight thousand dollars if it remains gravel, or twenty thousand if we decided to pave it. We also wanted to include barriers to eliminate direct access to Government Road, because I could imagine that being a little bit of a, a safety hazard trying to turn onto Government Road at that intersection. What else do you need to know? The, it doesn't prevent anybody from developing on it later, so the parking lot that's currently in front of St. Theron Associates, that one is still declared a surplus property, so if there was interest from a developer to perhaps build on a lot that we currently have designated as parking lot, that's something that can be brought to council for consideration, so it doesn't hinder that, that process at all. The recommendations to look at, whether council would like staff to look at the layout, and how many parking spots it would actually be able to accommodate, and bring that to council with the proposed parking bylaw amendment. Whether we decide to defer this project into a subsequent year. There is, like I said, there's that expense associated with it, and whether we want to tackle it this year. That's definitely a decision. That's definitely a decision council needs to make. Or we can decide not to proceed with the proposal at all.
Other questions? Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I, I brought this idea to our planning department after I had a discussion over coffee with a number of Kirkland Lake residents, and it had to do with us removing those parking spots on the south side of Government Road during the winter months. This year it wasn't a big issue because we didn't have bylaw enforcement, people just parked there anyways. But we do want to maintain enough parking for the businesses downtown. And I believe this, the Woolworths site would provide at least as many parking spots as we took away. I also, it's also in the middle of the block, so it's in the exact area where we took parking spots out. It's also a much safer alternative to on-street parking. With off-street parking, you're not opening your doors to oncoming traffic, you're not stepping into oncoming traffic. So it's a much safer solution. Also, the only entrance would be off Water Lane. It's flat and level with Water Lane, so it would be easy access situation. This, what's on the ground there, I'm not exactly sure, but it is a hard-packed, flat surface. Currently, there are unauthorized people using that for parking. So I think the location is good because people are already using it for parking. But, but another important factor that Ashley mentioned, should someone express interest in purchasing that land, it still would be available for sale. With the reunion this summer, I think we could use all the additional parking. One of the things I know that the Hundredth Anniversary Committee is trying to do is to draw people downtown, and this would provide additional parking for people to attend events downtown and to support downtown businesses. So I'm hoping that council will, will agree with me that this is a good idea. I don't, well, normally I'm saying, don't spend any money. I don't think eight thousand dollars for an entire parking lot is an exorbitant amount. Actually, I think that's quite cheap. I don't see any reason to pave it. I've never seen any dust problems with that lot in past summers. So I'm hoping council will support this idea.
Councillor Ivanoff?
I think it's a great idea. I think it's close enough to the banks, and I know the banks are always jammed up usually with their own employees at a park in front or around it, so that nobody can get even close to it. But that'd be a great place, maybe they would find a place to park there rather than in front of their place of business. I think it's a, it's a great spot for a parking lot.
Councillor Adams?
So is the eight thousand dollars, is that coming from like the operating budget for twenty nineteen already, or where does that one?
It would be an additional cost, it's not currently budgeted.
We'll make sure that's communicated to Treasury.
Of course.
Time for the upgrade of capital, thank you. Because you're getting daggers thrown at you visually right now from behind.
I feel them.
So I have a motion that's moved by councillor Patrick Adams, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff, that council proceed with amending the parking bylaw for council's consideration of parking lot at twenty-two, twenty-four Government Road West. It should be that staff proceed, sorry.
All in favor? Unanimous? Okay, and this status is Seven Park Street?
So Seven Park, we actually did an update to the former council previous to this, so it's a sort of a follow-up and a, an introduction to you guys, but a follow-up for the, I guess the last people that were around the table. We are, it's currently a, a property standards issue, there are orders placed on the property. This owner of the property is an Ontario numbered company that lives in southern Ontario. We've been in contact with him and have discussed the deficiencies over a number of years. He did try to make an attempt to, to fix this and have been trying to, he's been staying in touch and trying to do things to secure the building, keep the yard clean. What we're noticing now though is that the foundational on the north side of the building is slightly collapsed, which is causing a little bit of ground to a road, which is closer to the property line, so the neighbors really getting concerned about their structure. So even though they've made ongoing promises to, to do the repair, that nothing, no work's been taken place. So recently, what we did with our full review of the property standards bylaw last year is we, we, we got a waiver ready. So what we do is when there's a property in a lot of despair, it's, it's, it's someone else's land that we're going to be demolishing, we have this waiver that owners can sign, giving us permission to demolish the property. And that sort of takes the liability out of demolishing someone else's property without permission. So we, we did get a final letter with the, the waiver with them signed, or the signed, my gosh, I can't talk today, the signed waiver back. So at this point, all we're trying to do is let council know that we, our intent is to proceed, and whether or not council has any objections to us proceeding to get this vacant building down. There is a six thousand dollar cost, that six thousand dollars, or whatever that end up, the total at the end of the day is, will get charged back to the tax roll in an attempt to collect it. If it doesn't, it will form part of a tax sale, so that number will be added to the amount owing through tax sale. I, I can't foresee us getting that money back, but it's, it is the process for property standards. So the report goes through the details of the property itself and the process under property standards within the Building Code Act. We did kind of bring in some of the impediments to the process. And this sort of will lead nicely into my chat about property standards that is coming, I promise, very soon. Other questions?
Councillor Ivanoff?
Ashley, does individual pay the taxes on this property for the last nine years?
I'm not allowed to say?
Okay.
Sorry. It's confidential.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I did a drive-by of this place today, and your report mentions foundations, and the pictures we have here, you can't see the roof, but that house has problems from the foundation right to the roof. There are actual holes in the roof. In terms of the chances of taxpayers gaining their money back on this, I think are slim to nil because it's, I believe, a quarter, what would be considered a quarter lot. So even though we'll attach the, the cost to their, their tax bill, I don't anticipate that we'll recover it, unless one of the adjoining neighbors decided they wanted to add that quarter lot to their property. But it's certainly, it's, it's a hazard from the point of potential danger to people and it's, and properties. It's also at this point, I believe, a health hazard because with the holes in the roof and the water going in, you're going to have mold grow and grow. And so I, I think we should spend the money and get it demolished.
Councillor Adams?
Yep, certainly in favor of the demolish of it. There's lots of evidence out there that when you have all these buildings, it's sinking the property values of the surrounding neighborhoods, so when you remove one of these things, it's, removes that bit of downside, so I'm in favor of it. Certainly on Google Maps, doesn't look really well-maintained either, so, yep, I'm in favor.
I think it's clear that how I stand on abandoned and derelict buildings, not only is it a health and safety, but I personally believe it's better for aesthetic purposes from, of the town and for community pride that we end up with empty, flat lots rather than having to look at derelict buildings, so I'm definitely in support as well.
So I have a motion that's moved by councillor Patrick Adams, seconded by councillor Eugene Ivanoff. The council directs staff to proceed with scheduling the demolition of Seven Park Street in twenty nineteen.
All in favor? Unanimous?
I'd just like to say that unfortunately, I did upload, I thought I uploaded another version of this, but it's the old version, so, yeah, so what's in the package is the newer version, this is an outdated one.
The, one of the things we hate doing is coming back to council and saying, okay, here's your capital budget, and then, oh, here's another item, here's another item, like, you know, demolitions, parking lots. But sometimes funding programs come out much later than we anticipate, and this is one of them, the Northern Infrastructure. They are offering roughly eighty-three percent funding for a select number of projects, probably same, I don't think you're going to see this reoccurring, right now it's a one-year one. It came out in March, and staff did take a look at the different projects that were able to, that would fit underneath the criteria. There were four of them. Question, well, I'll just go through them quickly. Four were considered, one of them would be covered under the Connecting Link Program, which also has been announced, and we will be bringing it back to council in the future. That's the one on Government Road. One of them is a bridge, that's the Barron Street Bridge. I spoke with the roads foreman, and he's firmly of the opinion, and I agree with him, do not replace the bridge, put a culvert in instead, and it will cost less both to repair it as well to maintain it in the future. And I'm not sure, Steve, I think you said around twenty-five thousand or something like that for a culvert. Assume even if it's a little bit more, it's not really worth wasting the funding dollars on that. I don't think that replacing a bridge with a culvert would be eligible. The other two projects were Lake Shore Drive and McCamus, and then Main Street, number four, that's at the bottom, and the one that's at the very top. Both of them are roughly three hundred thousand dollars, leaving our share at about fifty thousand dollars. Both of them have significant impact on the municipality. I would think that the Main Street paving one probably a little bit more. From Dick City, it said that it could last another year or two, maybe three, but it is a heavily traveled route from staff perspective. You are declaring Main Street as a non-truck zone, why not repair it now and let it, at a, you know, considerable funded cost, and have it ready to service the community? It is a fairly major thoroughfare road. Lake Shore Drive and McCamus, the work had been done a few years ago. The services are in the ground, there is private land at the far back that would still be accessible and that they could develop on. Our issues are that the surfacing was not done, and we don't really like what that's doing to this infrastructure underneath the ground. As well, we are spending regularly fifteen thousand or so to keep it graded, to keep it flat, to keep the dust out. The report tells you how many homes and that are impacted. Question to council, I think, is do you want to add this to the capital project list? It is a funded opportunity that may not come again. Doesn't mean that you have to do it. Which of the projects would you like to do? From staff's recommendation is Lake Shore and/or, Lake Shore or Main Street? And if so, could we get a resolution? Because we do have to submit an application. The application is due on May fourteenth. It does not mean that the full documentation has to go in, but the application has to be in the pipe, and so we like to move forward with that. We're ready to do that for either project, Main Street or Lake Shore. We would like to, council's guidance on this.
Councillor Ivanoff?
My opinion is Main Street would affect more people, more residents of Kirkland Lake, so I would be in support of that being the project you put the application in for, only for that reason.
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I, I think in the future, Lake Shore, it's a minimal travel road, and I think Chip and Tar, or it was called McAdam when I was a kid, but apparently it's called Chip and Tar. Surfacing of that would be much more affordable and, and would reduce maintenance costs in terms of dust. And my question is, I travel Main Street and I travel Allen Avenue a lot, both of them. And to me, Allen Avenue's in a lot worse shape than Main Street. And yet, Allen Avenue doesn't seem to get, to be in the plans, so I'm just wondering why Allen Avenue wasn't considered for this funding?
The funding only allows for the road surface to curbs and that, doesn't allow for the infrastructure underneath the road. And so is, was Allen Avenue, do you have infrastructure piping issues with that one? So that, you would have that on that? How long, how, sorry, councillor Owen, how long is that section where the infrastructure has to be replaced? And does it make sense to replace the, the pavement on either sides? Come on, please, yes, sorry. And Dick's at the room, is cleared of staplers.
Okay, so considering Allen Avenue, with the amount of the funding it's requesting right now, we consider the Main Street because last year we come up with the priority of this particular street, and we had limitation amount of the money, that's why we come up up to just past the Portier's intersection. The remaining intersection is almost eight hundred meter longer, which we can utilize the funding more towards it while we considering the Allen Avenue. Allen Avenue, Allen Avenue down the Fifth Street all the way to the, all the way to the complex, which is really in a fair shape, while considering when we are coming down from the Tower Street to the Second Street, that's like major concern area, we're considering the payment. So over the time, like, we can basically put that into, into separate funding because we're not going to be able to utilize that much money towards Allen compared to the Main.
So it's too expensive?
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, I'd forgotten that the infrastructure on Allen Avenue was only redone to Second Street. And it's the section between Second Street and Government Road that's the problem. I, I'd forgotten that you would have had to do the infrastructure there, I was thinking it all, in Kirkland Lake terms, was new infrastructure. So that's, that's why I raised the question, but I, I fully understand now, thank you.
I think that it's also a good point, other people have mentioned Harding, et cetera. Again, the infrastructure has to be replaced, they're not covered.
Myself, I'm kind of looking at this differently, though only eighteen homes and four multi-residential units on that particular street. It costs us annually between fifteen thousand to twenty thousand to take care of that small area. In comparison, it takes two thousand to five thousand to take care of the area on Main. So even though only eighteen homes are there, all the taxpayers are paying the difference between fifteen to twenty thousand and two to five thousand. So I'm coming at this from a very different direction, I think.
I, I'm just going to go out, I, I think when we're looking at the streets too, what, there's options with Lake Shore. The, when you look at Main Street and you're spending two thousand, that's, you're right, and then if it falls apart in three years or two years, you're going to be spending far more than what we would normally have. That's kind of how it made on that, onto that list despite that number. Sorry. Steve, you were nodding, is that you're agreeing, or you want to say something?
Councillor Owen?
Yeah, and, and I'm hoping that not this year, but perhaps the year after, we could come up with funds to put Chip and Tar down there, which would greatly reduce our maintenance costs there, we wouldn't have to grade it as, we wouldn't have to grade it, we wouldn't have to put dust control down. We would be providing, not an ideal, but a much better road surface for the number of residents that, that live there. of residents that, that live there. And I, I'm glad you brought out your point, Stacy, because I had never considered that. And I think it's important that we look at all angles and, uh, I appreciate that. Thank you.
So, yeah, Steve, sorry.
Yeah. It's, this has been a little bit awkward for me because I am one of, I'm one of those residents that live on Lake Shore. Uh, anyway, the other thing I wanted to remind council and whether they find this important or not is that it was paved previously. There was pavement, not chip and tar. Uh, the only thing that was missing was the curbing. So, anyway, just.
Counselor Owen?
And not to be snarky, but my street used to have sidewalks on either side too, and we don't now. So, you know, it's, it's kind of what we can afford when we can afford it, I think.
Sorry, Steve, you opened yourself for that, you deserved one.
I, I don't mean that personally, Steve.
Yep, certainly echo yours, uh, Stacy, is, uh, the 15 to 20,000 rate, the maintenance costs, if you can eliminate that by, with, uh, half, partially funded project, then I'm for that, that Lake Shore and Drive and McCamus.
Okay, so because we have two options, we're gonna have to come to a consensus at the table. Um, so far it appears we're two for two. Um, Dennis, what is your ideas on this situation? Do you have any thoughts on, on either of the streets?
You can have my curbs. No, I, I really, I don't want to make it feel kind of awkward, but I think I would have to tend to go with, uh, with your, your opinion as well, Stacy.
If you don't mind, I'm just gonna do the one, which is right now it's three. If everybody wants to vote on that, if, if it gets voted down, then we'll, we'll do the one for Main Street.
Okay.
Okay. Let's see, this is, just one second.
So it's moved by Counselor Patrick Adams, seconded by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff. The council approves the acting chief administrative officer proceed with a funding application to investing in Canada infrastructure program, rural and northern communities funding stream for the project, Lake Shore Road and McCamus Avenue. Counselor Patrick Adams, are you yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Eugene Ivanoff, yea or nay? Nay. Counselor Rick Owen, yea or nay?
Nay.
Uh, Counselor Dennis Perrier, yea or nay? Pardon me? Nay? So this is, no, you, okay. Counselor Stacy White, yea or nay?
Yay.
Yay. So that is three nays and two yays. So this, Lake Shore and McCamus Avenue is a no. So then the next, the next, um, will be that council approves the acting chief administrative officer proceed with a funding application to investing in Canada infrastructure program, rural and northern communities funding stream for the project. It'll be Main Street from Poplar Avenue to Archer Drive. And again, a recorded vote. Counselor Patrick Adams, this is yea or nay? So this is the Main Street project, yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Eugene Ivanoff? Counselor Rick Owen?
Yea.
Counselor Dennis Perrier? Counselor Stacy White?
Yay.
Okay, so it's approved, it's Main Street. No bylaws, no, sorry.
Okay, so we have no, um, reading or considerations of bylaws. Uh, questions from council, uh, to staff? There is none recorded for, uh, this meeting? Notices of motion, none? So confirmation bylaw?
So it's moved by Counselor Patrick Adams, seconded by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff. The bylaw nineteen dash zero four seven being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council at its meeting held May seventh, two night, 2019, be read a first, second, third time, enacted and passed.
All in favor? Unanimous? Counselors' reports? Counselor Owen?
Yeah, Thursday, I attended the Northern Prospectors Association, uh, monthly meeting and they had, uh, a number of, uh, management people there from their exploration division from Agnagle Eagle, which is, uh, the company that currently holds, uh, the Upper Beaver and Upper Canada mines, former mines. Uh, during the presentation, they pointed out that they have thirty-seven kilometers of mining claims stretching from Swastika to almost Larder Lake. And that on, in much of the area, very little modern exploration, what they call modern exploration, has been done. So they believe there's a huge potential in the area for more gold finds. Currently, they have twenty people working onsite in Dobi. Uh, they have a budget this year of 5.3 million dollars US for exploration, which works out to about 7.2 million dollars Canadian. And that's being spent, uh, primarily at the Upper Beaver with, um, a respectable portion also being spent on the Upper Canada mine. Um, at the Upper Beaver, they currently have two drills operating and one drill operating on the Upper Canada. They are going to add a third drill to the Upper Beaver property this summer. At the Upper Beaver, they are only looking at underground mining. Um, in addition to the people that they have onsite working, the twenty people working onsite, they are also have their engineers at, uh, head office. Uh, Agnagle Eagle is a very large company and they are working on different scenarios, um, for mining, uh, whether it be a ramp leading to a shaft or whether it be a stra- a shaft straight from the surface. Um, so that's all being considered. The work they are doing right now is to move it from an exploration project to an advanced exploration project, at which point they would go underground and take a bulk sample. Um, as we know, mining is, uh, there's no guarantees when it comes to mining, but they do like the fact that it, it does have, uh, a reserve there, uh, which is your most reliable, uh, mineral, uh, estimate. They had, by their own admission, they have a lot of work to do, um, prior to making any sort of decision on, uh, whether or not they would go into production. Um, but they certainly are optimistic. And, and this is a little speculation on my own part, but also backed up by some of the prospectors I talked to after the meeting. During the meeting, they mentioned that they have closed down one mine, uh, in Quebec between here and Valdore. So reading between the lines, it looks like they're looking for a, uh, project that's fairly well advanced, uh, to move into production and, uh, replace the ounces of production that they lost from their other mine. Now let me emphasize, that is speculation of my own and speculation of some of the prospectors I talked to. That's not something they said, but it does make sense to people in the business. So I just thought I'd report that, um, that, uh, they're being quite aggressive. And, uh, actually the one hole that they drilled, the one deep hole, and I couldn't believe this figure when they were asked, it costs them somewhere between 500 and 800,000 dollars to drill the one hole. Um, and that hole didn't get spectacular results, but what it did do for the company was it confirmed, uh, that the deposit continues, uh, at depth, uh, well below the known, uh, resources. So I think it's all good news and, and hopefully they'll, within the next year or two, will make a, a decision to go to the advanced exploration, take a bulk sample and hopefully go from there. Thank you.
Counselor Adams?
Yep, just would like to wish the, uh, Ontario Mine Rescue teams that are competing, uh, this week at, uh, Timmins. So we have Kirkland Lake Golds, uh, two sites competing, as well as Alamos and McEwen. Uh, all these individuals put a lot of time and effort into it and I wish them all the best of luck at, uh, their event.
Counselor Perrier?
I attended the hundredth anniversary committee, committee meeting last week. Uh, registration's still going slow, but I think that's a typical Kirkland Lake thing. Uh, they are getting lots of events. I think last count they're up to something like fifty-five different events. They secured the, the golden helmets last time, they were pretty excited. Um, they were, they're waiting for the okay for their, I believe, for their license for the Princess Park, parking lot, I think. So they can go ahead with that. And the car ticket sales are going fairly good and they'll be at the trade show this weekend if anybody wants to go down and buy a ticket out. Thank you.
Um, myself, I was one of, um, the council delegates to go and, um, deliver or give a little speech for, on behalf of the hundredth anniversary to school-aged children. And I absolutely have to say what a joy it was to be able to do that on behalf of the town and the hundredth anniversary, um, committee. The, the kids just ate it up, just absolutely. I had grade, uh, junior kindergarten to grade six, so it was a marvelous, wonderful thing compared to maybe high school students. It was very shiny and caught their attention. Uh, Dennis also, um, had the pleasure of doing that to homeschool children.
My only comment I got was, but the mayor's not here?
Uh, the last thing I want to add is, um, over the last month, there was severe cuts to Ontario library services, both north and south. Um, and due to this, they've decided to cut their, uh, interlibrary, um, loaning service. So to put it in perspective, for a small municipality, there's about a hundred books that either come in or go out of Kirkland Lake, um, every month. So that was very concerning. It actually happened the same day as the library committee meeting. So it came to, uh, quite a shock to the board members. So it's just a word that adds more things or cut at the provincial level. More services will lean on their local communities, including, um, the Texan Tenille Library. There's no additional information and...
It's moved by Counselor Patrick Adams, seconded by Counselor Eugene Ivanoff. The council adjourned its regular meeting of council held May seventh, 2019 to an in-camera meeting pursuant to section two thirty-nine two of the municipal act to discuss one potential sale of land and two items pertaining to identifiable persons.
All in favor? Unanimous?